Do we have any date that the demolition will start?
Uh, no, not yet. It's, they're working on this part. So, they're taking another step forward in the, uh, individual demolition of the old hospital. Um, uh, let's see, uh, I've noticed, uh, you know, if you're driven around the square, uh, Monday morning stopped in, Sweet Mayhem has moved there, uh, on the south end, on the back end. I think that is the new image has moved in or been new. So, the square is getting more businesses on town and, uh...
And the vault is open?
Yep, and the vault, yep. They've, uh, been opened on, uh, I think they're open throughout the weekend. I don't know if there's two Saturdays, so...
And Lindsey Barnett's place is on the upper side. It's opening.
Yeah, on the, uh, uh, the, uh, is that new image Lindsey Barnett?
Uh-uh. She does, uh, decorations.
Okay, yeah, alright. So, uh, so some good moves of businesses, uh, there in Kent Square. Um, that, uh, you know, we can't say names or anything like that, but as far as we're working for the city, uh, let you know that, you know, I was involved in, we showed the Parker and Manek building, uh, a week and a half ago on Friday. Uh, they were taking their pictures and all their information back to corporate and we hope to hear back from them soon. But we are out there and it's, you know, showing the buildings and hopefully, uh, something up there will come out. Uh, to add on to street department, uh, you know, it's, leaves are falling down right now. You can take out to the, uh, compost for free, uh, your in, your individual leaves and stuff. Um, but, uh, talking with, uh, is it Tucker that drives the, uh, sweet, street sweeper?
Uh, Cup.
Cup, uh, that's right. Uh, I know it's, I saw him earlier and he said like yesterday, he had to dump it six times out there for all the leaves.
He's done about every hour.
Yeah. And so whenever you're raking your yard, mowing it, mulching it and everything else, please make sure you, uh, blow your leaves and limbs back into your yard. Uh, I know as long as the, uh, uh, you know, it's still afternoons are pretty nice to get out on a motorcycle. Uh, that's a death sentence to, uh, anybody on a motorcycle. That's having, uh, leaves and, uh, and grass clippings blowing out in the street. It's, it's very dangerous. Uh, uh, so just, uh, please, it's, uh, whenever you're cleaning up your yard and everything else and blowing it, you know, uh, be careful of all those that are out there and, uh, blow it back up in your yard. Uh, and, uh, but besides that, I, I like the, uh, um, the direction, especially like the square is going. We are working for the citizens out there trying to, uh, see what we can find to, uh, bring to Kent. And, uh, with that, I hope everybody has a good and happy, uh, Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, but, you know, everybody always does, so, uh... Uh, and, uh, it's gonna be a different year with COVID going on. We don't know, uh, how many of your families or friends, when you normally have a house full, what's it gonna be this year? It's all gonna be a little different, so. Keep on this theme, so...
Unfortunately, we can't predict what's gonna happen this year.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, with the holiday season going on, uh, please, uh, you know, just play it safe. Alright, public comments. Put Andy Goode.
Hey, thanks a lot. Tommy, all good? I'm here representing United Way. Uh, I, as an inquiry, uh, question about, you know, the banners we have around the square. Who has the responsibility of putting those up? Who approves those?
The banners.
Yes, on the whiteboard.
Who's done it before?
Uh, I think it's at the chamber?
Yeah, I believe so, it is.
I think it's, uh, Chamber Congress.
They approve it?
Yeah, it's, they, they make up the banners and then they put them out. Or you have the banners?
Well, different organizations do.
Okay, okay.
Typically, city like Gas and Water, like with the flags, they purchase those and tourism pays them back. You know, we pay that back to them, so they kind of facilitate the buying, but most of that comes through us. And I think like the flags, like he's talking about, are individual, um, organizations that if they want them put up.
Yeah, and who approves them?
The chamber approves for them to go up?
Are you talking about the, the vertical banners?
Like the one that's up now is the farmer's market. The Dunkland County County Council pays for those, you know, but...
Okay.
Uh, then like Ballin Arts puts some up. Well, what it is, United Way has some banners that we would like to put up.
Okay.
But, we can't find anyone who can put them up for us.
So, Mr. Wilkins, would that be a problem?
It is?
Oh.
He's waiting back there, the gentleman there.
Christmas banners.
We sent him here a minute ago. We're still here. These are a loss control consultant and they just turn over, thinking we're gonna hurt somebody or scratch a car.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna lock any kind of, uh...
It's not that we care if they go up there. It's just that we don't need to be involved in it. That's, that's not what we, that's not our business. We do that, so...
So...
Those poles actually belong to the city, by the way.
The what now?
The poles, the decorative poles, those are your, your guys.
Oh, they're ours. Okay.
Okay.
So...
So, nobody knows the answer.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think it's great for the city to have banners up. It shows that things are going on. In United Way or, you know, uh, what we wanna do to raise money for this next effort, uh, we would like to put some up, but we can't find anyone who can put them up for us.
We, we had a actual group that did this for several years, but that, uh, ran out of money, wasn't it, Terry?
Oh, well, you know, it's part of the, uh, it was all part of the downtown revitalization thing that Governor Blunt, Governor, they had to, uh, approach every city, but they, they spent a lot of money in every city buying things like the poles, favors and all that, all that.
Christmas decorations.
Yeah, and, uh, so then one for the rug, uh, nobody's there, nobody's funding it anymore.
So, David, what are we gonna do this year for Christmas decorations?
We're gonna put those up. We typically do.
Do they have banners?
Pardon me?
Do they have banners as part of it?
I don't think there's any banners. It's just a raft.
Is Murma okay with those? Is Murma okay with those?
Pardon me?
Is Murma okay with those?
Not really, but it's just one of those legacy things that we do. We've done, and so we'll keep doing that until they told us not to.
Is there no way we can lock the square off? Keep cars and stuff that when they're gonna put them up, lessen that change?
Oh, he's, he's talking about afterwards if something blows them off.
Yeah, but then Murma is afraid that they're gonna scratch a car or...
Well, they're putting them up every while they're out and the wind blows them off.
Murma's also afraid of Murma's thing.
Murma's afraid of everything.
Anything happens, they'll cover us anyway.
So, how about this? We will...
Check into it.
Check into it and we will get back with you within the next couple of weeks.
Does the street department have boom truck or...
That's what I was wondering.
Street department has no way to do it, but we fall under Murma too.
Murma's business overpriced and they just gave it six hundred dollars.
We don't have any kind of like the lift truck or anything.
How much?
Yeah, a bu, a bucket truck. It was a parking park.
Tommy, do you wanna put them around the square?
Yes, we wanted them all around the square and, uh, but I think it was gonna be an encouragement if we knew that whoever would approve it and we had a way to bring them up, that we could have something through each one of the seasons. And, uh, it just looks better than being there up there.
Yeah.
Right. Something more agree.
Uh, give us a couple of days and we'll give you...
Because we have an order to put banners, so we know we have someone that can put them up.
Uh, like, give me, give us a couple of days and we'll give you a call.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Say your name, sir.
I'll hold it.
Congratulations on reelection.
You fell backwards.
Mayor and members of the city council, I thank you for providing, uh, me with the time to, uh, to be before you to comment on the comments the mayor is putting forth in this chamber and in public businesses with the city that's being, uh, directed toward the sheriff's office and the way we accept inmates at the Dunkland County Justice Center. He stated Kennett PD has to take inmates to another county for incarceration. That is not totally correct. They do not have to take an inmate to another county. At the time of his comments, uh, I, at the time of his comments, I can only find one situation in which they took an inmate to another county. That situation is which, uh, involve a parole warrant issued by the state of Missouri. For previous experience, we have taken a person with a parole warrant to prison, only to be advised that they would not accept the person and we had to bring that person back to the justice center. That situation has reoccurred, however, and we have called prior to making a trip to Bonterre only to be told that we would not have, that we would not accept the parolee at that time. So, they don't accept the inmates and they don't pay for the inmates. Currently, the state of Missouri owes Dunkland County several, several hundred thousand dollars for the incarceration of inmates. We don't look to get that anyway soon. The situation that occurred with the person that was taken in Pembiscot County was on a parole warrant and after hearing the comments of you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Wilson, I inquired about the circumstances. We were presented with a parole warrant and as I learned on November the sixth, Keith Kennett PD got a warrant for resisting arrest. Kennett PD's warrant has since been served. The parole warrant was canceled by the state as is, as in the past, they did not want to take that inmate back. That subject bonded out and he's currently on, out on bond as we speak. Having said that, you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Wilson should be aware that Dunkland County's office is responsible for anywhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty inmates per day at the present time. It has been through the diligence of the jail staff and entire staff that we've been able to keep the COVID situation out of the jail. You, as much as anyone in this city, should be aware of just how dangerous this situation could be with the recent loss of a great police officer, Rick Golds, who as I understand it contacted the COVID through the duties as an officer. Your chief has my personal phone number and he has been informed to contact me anytime he may have a problem. I mentioned here that I've received no phone call from him on this situation that the mayor announced in this body the last time he was here. I have within the past month received calls from Chief Wilson and Officer Philip Caldwell, who I consider to be a good officer and a superior, and a supervisor for Kennett PD, who has requested my assistance in incarcerating individuals and assisting with persons who have had mental health issues. I do not know of a time, again, I do not know of a time that I have not honored Chief Wilson's request or that of Philip Caldwell. I might add here that Philip Caldwell has never complained. Their request for assistance with persons who because of a serious nature have been honored and incarceration has been made. Just to provide you with a couple of examples of out of the ordinary circumstances for which I have been contacted, Chief Wilson calls me by phone and states his officer to dealing with a female who is apparently off medication and has been in the city streets unclothed and they don't know what to do if we don't pay her. Number one, she's not fit for confinement by statute and the female needs medical assistance and not incarceration. The proper steps to take in that situation is for Kennett PD to contact MOCAR, get the person evaluated and if the person is determined to need medical attention, MOCAR files a report with a Division Three judge and an orders issued to the sheriff's office authorizing our office to transport to a medical facility. We do that quite often. The chief was informed that further assistance is needed to get back with me. I received a second phone call from the chief stating that he did not get the situation resolved. I told him I would assist if they would bring her to the justice center where we could discuss her situation. Uh, he, with the assistance of a female officer, brought her to the justice center, Sallyport, where I asked my staff to provide her with clothing, which was done. I talked with the female and explained that she needed help. She's been through this situation before. We, we've taken her before to different places. She was informed by me that she could receive medical attention or we would request through the courts in order to obtain medical attention. She agreed for medical attention. An ambulance was called and she was transported to Perrigo. The ambulance personnel requested an officer ride on the ambulance and after a discussion with the ambulance personnel, it was agreed they would be content if an officer that would follow them to the Perrigo Hospital. The Kennett PD female officer followed the ambulance to Perrigo Hospital without incident. The lady got proper treatment. She didn't need to be incarcerated. No way should she have been incarcerated out here. I have another example where I received a call from Chief Wilson stating one of his officers had been requested to accompany an ambulance personnel to Dexter Hospital with a person they were transporting from Kennett. He stated he did not have the personnel to go to Dexter to pick up his officer. He was informed at that time, that was approximately eight or eight-thirty at night. I asked if the officer could not ride back with the ambulance and the chief comment was, if the ambulance personnel had another call when returning to Kennett, that officer would be stuck with him. I had one deputy on duty to cover the entire county and I did not ask the chief how many officers he had working. I informed the chief that I would see that his officer got back to Kennett and I personally went to Dexter and picked up Officer Brandon Perkins and brought him back to Kennett. Over the past twenty-four years, I've always had a good working relationship with police chiefs and mayors. We have in most cases been able to work out any differences. Quite honestly, I don't recall any real differences we have, but we should be doing it without name-calling and bad-mouthing each other. Your chief has been told on several occasions to contact me if he has a problem. The mayor mentioned these comments to the city council. The Kennett officers are being put in danger by having to transport out of county. We at the sheriff's office are all aware of the danger of transporting individuals as we're faced with that task most every day of the week. In fact, anytime an officer is on duty in this day and time, he can face many dangers. Many times those individuals are transporting are the very ones that are committing crimes in the city of Kennett and if sentenced to prison or taken to a mentally, uh, medical facility, we are the ones to transport. Our transports can involve anywhere from one to possibly twelve to fifteen inmates at a time. So, we are well aware of transport safety. If it is the decision of the chief and the mayor to take your arrestees to another county, so be it. This council should be aware that the cost for incarcerating your inmates in our county is u, in the other counties is usually forty-five dollars a day. The Dunkland County Justice Center charges twenty dollars per day. And since it's a mayor and the chief has consented to pay forty-five dollars a day to another county, I will be asking the county commission to meet with me to discuss the possibility of increasing our daily charge, uh, to a higher rate other than twenty dollars. In all fairness to the smaller cities, that increase, if any, to the smaller cities will be looked at on a percentage basis as a number of the small cities have problems in keeping law enforcement officers and the additional costs of incarcerating an inmate would place a hardship on them. All of our costs of housing inmates have increased and we have not raised our daily rate. We hadn't really done that in probably twenty-something years. This council should also be aware that in most every case where the sheriff's office has been called upon, where the offense is of a serious nature, that I'm aware of the person would, would be allowed to be housed at the justice center. An example, domestic disputes, burglaries and assaults. And just for information purposes, the justice center is currently housing thirteen individuals who are awaiting trial for murder. Your chief and some members of the Kennett PD supervi, supervisory staff have access to my phone number twenty-four hours a day. At this period of time, we do not want to jeopardize a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty inmates, our jail staff or any officers within the county with incarceration of a misdemeanor. All inmates brought to the justice center quarantined for a period of ten days before going into general population and there are times when our quarantine area is full and which restricts us from taking crimes of lesser than nonviolent situation. And an example of a nonviolent situation where a court date can be permissible would be shoplifting. When the COVID situation has been minimized, that subject can then be addressed. We do request from the judges that court date whenever possible for those nonviolent crimes and those with serious medical conditions. Our judges have been totally cooperative in providing court dates for the lesser crimes and the inmates have been released. In closing, I mention to the council that in the month of October, we accepted thirty persons from the Kennett Police Department with those persons being incarcerated, all of which have gone through our prot, protocol. We have protocol for accepting individuals just as the stores, the hospitals, the doctor's office and the restaurants do. If any of you have family members in a nursing home or if you've had a family member in the hospital recently, you know exactly what I'm talking about. We do provide the inmates with video visitation where they have the ability to communicate with their family over the internet and they have the capabilities to make phone calls. I myself have been refused my medical appointment, not because I did not conform to the protocol, but because my office was in a correctional facility. It is my intent to continue to cooperate fully with the cities with the county in regard to housing inmates. We have a protocol to follow and we'll continue to do so for the safety, not only for my personnel, but also for the safety of all the officers in the county and the inmates. I do not intend to keep silent when the mayor is out in the public asking that a member of my department be fired for trying to keep all concerns safe during this time of the COVID situation. Mr. Mayor, you have asked county officials and members of this community the following questions and I wanna address them. Who is the sheriff responsible to and who is above him? And who can fire the chief deputy? And I want to answer those questions directly to you. If you had come to me, I would have told you. Number one, I'm elected by the people of Dunkland County just as you're elected by the citizens of Kennett. I've been elected for the past twenty-four years. I, like you, can be removed from office by the vote of the people. That's called an election. You and I serve at the will of the people and I'm surprised that you did not know that. And I'm also the person responsible for hiring Chief Deputy Corner and I have no intention of firing him. I hope this answers your questions and if you have additional questions, you know where my office is located and you're welcome to come to the office to discuss any questions you have. And to you, Chief Wilson, I told you on several occasions to call me if you have questions and that statement still goes. Mr. Mayor, speaking of a citizen of Kennett and not as a sheriff, I would think that you would have four more important problems that need to be addressed with all the closings of the various businesses and factories than worrying about one person that is taken to another coun, county. The idea of increasing incarceration costs by doubling the expense for the taxpayers of the city Kennett just isn't feasible in my perspective. A man in your position as mayor of the Senate Kennett should be spreading nega, should not be spreading negativity, but should project a positive image and work on solutions that would be beneficial for the city. That would stop the erosion of losses of business within the community. Mayor and members of the council, I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a rental property, the five oh six North Street and we've owned it about three or four years now, but we had issues with plumbing. Never nothing like so long right now, but from my understanding, there's a sewer main running down Walnut Street and sewer main running down Everett. Years ago, North Street was an alleyway and whoever done all the sewers there ran a four inch down the middle of that alleyway. My house at five oh six drains into that and this gentleman back here, where do you go? His house at five oh five, he's lived there since the seventies and had issues, drains into that. I had Larry Sanders numerous times out. This last time, if he unclogged me, it would clog him up. If you unclog him, it clogs back. Now they're both clogged up. My renter, been there with me, she's lived in that house nine years. But, right now she's having to put a bag over there, come up, use the bathroom in a bag and carry it out. I've gotta keep the cat off the two-inch line. Her washing machine water, tub water and all that drains on her driveway. I approached Mr. Handstock today about it. He come out and looked, seen the water. I had pictures of all that. I talked to Dave Wilkins at City about it. The city says it's not their problem. City like that water, cause that's not a man. But, before they paved it, something should have been done. I mean, the four-inch path is not, you know, not gonna work. I'm just asking for something to be done on it.
So, it's from the house to the main?
Well, there is no way.
There is no way.
Yeah, you showed me this line.
This is Walnut Street. The green is the main sewer there. Everett Street brings main sewer. This is North Street, which used to be an alleyway.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a four-inch coming out.
So, is that a private line? Is that a private line that connects?
Well, they say it's private line, but like I said...
Sounds like it was if it's a four-inch, because City doesn't use anything less than an eight-inch that I'm aware of.
That's, that's true, but when they paved that road, when they paved that alleyway, you know...
Victor's down before, before I had the house or anybody else. He's been there since the seventies and always had issues.
Seventy-two, he bought the house, road was already paved. He saved taxes since nineteen seventy-two.
There, there's no way...
Well, Victor's gone, so he can't, we can't go there, but, uh...
I got this, Dave Wilkins. My house, five oh six, this gentleman's house, this is his daughter, five oh five. He's been there since the seventies. This is the main sewer, Everett, main sewer Walnut. The four-inch path of my house comes here, turns right here to four meter, right here and goes into a four-inch underneath the road. Used to be an alley, but they paved over it.
This does the same thing. Neither one of them can use the plumbing. They can't wash. They can't use the bathroom. They can't take a shower. They can't, my dad can't even get a drink of water.
But City like Guess and Water, somebody there, and I'm not saying Dave, but City like, uh, told us that, that caused that was done and it was a private line.
I'm gonna weigh them.
About their responsibility.
It's gonna be a hard one there, because if this is all private property, the only way you can hook into one of their mains, you'd have to go across private property, so you'd have to get permission from the people that own that property. You didn't go across their property.
Why didn't the city, before they paved that alleyway, put a main in?
No one in this building can answer that question tonight.
Well, see, you're calling this an alleyway. Is that a...
Well, it's straight down the alley, but they paved the main before.
I've got a question.
Okay.
When, uh, whoever put that four-inch line, David, that, that goes to you. When somebody, an individual ties into your main with a, with a line, after the line's been installed, does it become your responsibility to keep that clean or theirs?
There's, it's still, it's still a service line as far as City like Guess and Water is concerned. Okay, that's what I wanna clarify that.
Main is a main, but it's a service line, it's a service line.
Well, it's a...
I'll have to check into it, but if this is North Street and this is North Street, that would have been North Street. It would have just been gravel. Anyway, until they paved it, it would still have been a city.
Was it an alley that was converted to a street or was it, oh, it was a street?
I would have to check into it, but usually not. Usually, there, there's streets all the way through, but they'll paint so much of it and then some of it may be gravel for a long time, like Russell, Russell out there from Compress to Floyd. It was gravel for years.
But a private line under a street?
The, not, not a private line, no.
Well, nineteen fifty, it was maybe.
But the thing about it is, back then they couldn't have done anything. If it's a gravel road, they could have dug it up.
On that line, did they clean outs on that line?
Under the street, no. I mean, one time, before I owned the house, Reeves Fleming come out, whoever owned it for me, and cut the road out, about three foot out into the road and dug down and run snake through there.
But, and my dad has paid several times to have someone come out, um, and router it out to the corner. This is ridiculous, though. It's not getting any better. No one's coming out from corner to corner and cleaning out to the middle, so it's not doing any good. It's to the point that he can't even get a drink of water in his house. He's seventy-four years old. Here it is, winner.
Ma'am, with all due respect, we've known about this for five minutes. Give us some time. We will get this taken care of. Well, no one in this room do anything about this.
If it's not our line, how can we take care of it?
The only thing that I could see feasible would be, would be to let them maybe run out to the edge of the road.
We're already up to the edge of the road.
Well, what I'm saying is, we'll have to check into this, but they can't go across private property without the people okaying it. If we have an easement from the center of the road... If we have an easement from the center of the road so far in to where it would go past the road, actual road, they might could come out to the road, and then if they trench down the side of the road, could they hook into y'all on one of those roads? And they would be able to hook into a main on either block. But it would be up to them to do it. I mean...
Is there another property between that property and the...
Yes, both, going both ways.
One way there's the driveway, but one way there's a water main, so you gotta...
That's a good question as well.
Yeah, but I mean, is it, I'd have to check on the roadway, but if, if there's an easement there, the city could okay them to trench down the edge of the road to go to the main, I'm assuming. But we can, we'll check into it definitely.
So, as taxpayers, paying property tax and all that on their property, it's not like we done it ourselves, run that line.
I understand that, but...
So my point is, I have talked to somebody in another town, bigger city. They said the city, before they paved it, should have known, that should have had a main sewer line.
I would have known if somebody had danced there and been...
I mean, not, you've got rental property. That'd be the same situation on you. You, you've got something, you have no ideas what's there. But before you got it thirty, forty years ago, it had a four-inch line running down it, and they paved over it.
Yeah, but you're saying when the city paved the road, they should have checked. How would they know when they...
But in the city's defense, those houses were there, and they had plumbing hooked up, so they would have just probably assumed that there was already a line there hooked to it. They wouldn't, they wouldn't have known.
I mean, like you told me today, their mains are all right here. So they knew there wasn't a main there.
When those houses were built, they didn't have big maps. I know this is just new, because we're just getting into it too, so if the houses were already there and functioning, I'm sure someone just figured they were already probably hooked, had a main running down from there, because there was not an issue. I mean, I can see if the house was built after, but...
The system was built.
Who made the map?
Well, they, I'm sure City like Water made this map, but it's probably recent. Y'all just been mapping in the last few years, because we've just been doing it for two or three years, so...
The system, the sewer system got built, and they tried to get within two hundred feet of everybody's property, is what they did. In fact, I'm talking about a hundred years ago.
Say that again.
They tried to get within two hundred feet of everybody's property boundary. Because if you're within two hundred feet of the property boundary, when the system was installed, you had ninety days to hook up.
Okay.
And I figured, this, this is only speculation, but I know, I'm hearing that there's two houses that are affected by one pipe here.
From both houses, drain to one pipe?
The same thing, just, you know, split the cost. It's, it's a hundred and fifty feet, they'll run it out there and hook you in. That's only speculation, and that might have been seventy-five years ago.
Okay, I thought you were talking about now.
No, I'm talking about hundreds of years ago.
On this end, if you go towards Walnut Street, there's a main water line and stuff. They said it had to be moved before you could run sewer, and they did. There's two meters that's right, right there on the corner of Walnut and North Street, water.
We looked at that today, didn't we?
Yeah. One, one, one goes through the house that faces Walnut Street. I don't know where the other one goes to, but there's two meters right there.
Well, meter, but is there water, there's a water main, that's the problem.
Well, there's two water meters there, and then the little thing that you're talking about is out in the road. The little cap, the main water line. It's out in the road.
Where are, where is the line running to now, the four-inch line?
That's what I'm telling you.
Where does it run?
There's five oh six. I've got a clean out right beside the house on the west side. It comes out, it turns, and comes. There's a section of the road being cut out, two foot wide, right, before we cut out the road. When you get down the road, right?